Your 2021 A notes and your 2022 notes.
Okay, so we made another payment, right? Because this says 16,537, and I just got this. This is for 2025.
What are you comparing that to?
Total debt outstanding balance, $16,537,000.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That money is not paid off yet. We own that.
Correct.
Okay. So tonight, we thought, and of course, I've been working with these numbers until I got the agenda. I thought you were, we were borrowing 13,500, because if you look at the document that I got from the business manager, it says the amount borrowed is 13,350.
Okay.
The agenda says we're going to borrow 19 million.
That's what the not to exceed resolution states. That's not what you're going to borrow.
That's what's on the agenda.
So again, the resolution creates a maximum.
Yeah, I have a lot of trouble understanding what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Not loud enough? Is that it? The resolution is a not to exceed amount of 19 million. But there are protections within the document that will limit you to $13,350,000 as a project fund deposit after the bonds are sold. That is in the document, section 11.01.
Could it go up to $19 million?
No, it cannot.
No? Why are we borrowing that money?
We have to by state law.
Again, we're not borrowing $19 million. We're authorizing a not to exceed amount of 19 million to accommodate state law to allow you to do the bond issue that you want within those parameters.
Okay. Did you do, are you familiar with Exhibit A and Exhibit B? One is called maximum wrap schedule, and the other one is called maximum debt service and principal amortization schedule.
I am familiar.
On Exhibit B, it says that our original debt would be 41,300, 260, it's real little print, 40, 41,300 some dollars, okay. But then apparently, we got some money from the state. So then you, you have another one called local effort. Local effort is us, the taxpayers, right? So that takes that down to $38,000, 12,976. Is this document not correct?
This document shows what your existing debt is plus the maximum schedule that's Exhibit A. But that is, again, not what we'll borrow. It's just to create the box that your new bond issue will fit in.
So you understand this is what I've been given?
I do.
Now, let's look at Exhibit A. This one really shocked me because it is for $19 million. Again, given to me by the business manager. But I had a very interesting note on this. In the years '25, '26, '26 and '27, and '27, '28, each year, we're going to pay $15,000 on the principal. Is that correct?
That is part of the not to exceed schedule, but it.
Is that correct? Just give me a yes or no.
No, it is not correct. This is a schedule that shows, I see, I see what you're looking at. This is a schedule that shows the maximum amounts, but it does not reflect what you will actually borrow.
So these documents are incorrect.
They create a maximum amount to accommodate state law.
And the agenda says we're going to vote a bond for $19 million, and that is correct.
It's an amount not to exceed $19 million.
Okay, because according to Exhibit A, for the first three years, we pay $15,000. And during that same period of time, the interest that you list is $1,743,200. Then the payments balloon. They get real big. They get almost up to $3 million on that. And that's the $19 million one. That's the $19 million.
Dr. Feig, can I see the, um, the documents that you're referring to?
You have them in your agenda. They came in your agenda. You have them.
But I don't know what you're referring to. Can I just see?
There it is. It's in your agenda.
Yeah, those came from those guys, not our business manager.
I know. That's why I'm asking him the question.
Well, you were claiming.
This was from the business manager.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
This was from the business manager.
Right.
Well, no, that did not come, the other one did not come for me, but that's okay. Dr. Feig, if I may, we're looking to, to get new money of $13,350,000. We're in addition, looking to refinance the money that we took out in 2022 for the, for the roofs and for the field and that type thing, in order to save $117,000. So that's why it is, the, that's why it is inflated. And now, as Attorney Dick had said, by the state laws, we have to put a, we have to put this in a box of a larger amount. That's not the amount that we intend to borrow. We intend to borrow the 13,350, the 4, the 4,500,000, plus then obviously closing costs. Just like you would on a house. This is, this is a debt organism type thing. You would have closing costs on that as well.
Okay, this came from the superintendent this week. I just got it. Let me read it to you. Item number four is the bond resolution for the GISA project that was discussed at the last meeting. Please keep in mind, the maximum amount, $19 million, consists of the amount needed for the GISA project and overage, O-V-E-R-A-G-E, for the GISA project that was discussed at the last meeting and refinancing that 22 bond. It says, that's what it says.
What I mean by that is the amount that we need to put in that resolution by law.
So all of these documents that I was provided as a board member, and including the agenda, are incorrect.
I'm just going to just say real quick, they're not incorrect. They include a sum not to exceed, as Attorney Dick has explained, in compliance with state law, which requires that you essentially have a resolution that sets parameters that exceed the amount that you actually intend to borrow. We have 35 school clients. They all do bond issues exactly the same way. And I have yet to see one that borrowed more money than, than they intended to borrow. So I understand what you're saying, and yet it does not, in my view, have any validity to it because the sum not to exceed resolution is not a commitment to borrow that amount.
Mr. Lucas, do you know how serious this is?
Of course I do.
We're talking 30-some million dollars going on our taxpayers.
But you're misrepresenting the.
Why am I misrepresenting? You gave me this.
Because there isn't a single person in this room who in good faith believes that the, the board is looking to borrow $19 million of new money. It's been explained to you multiple times, and yet you continue to misrepresent this so that people have incorrect information.
Will you read the agenda item and what it says?
Can I ask a question if I may?
Certainly.
So the 4,500,000 that we had originally had in bonds from 2022. Now, does that come from several different bonds?
No, actually, it was a, it wasn't even a bond. It was a loan that we, that we took through through Truist Bank.
Okay.
And we borrowed that money for, for the roof at the high school and for the field, those type things. That's what that was all about.
Okay.
The masonry work.
Masonry work, yes. And so with that being said, you know, obviously, interest rates, we're hoping to save some additional money. Unfortunately, interest rates are very fluid and fluctuating right now. But if we can, when it comes time to sell the bonds, if the, if the interest rate is indeed favorable, then Alicia will say, okay, then I want to cover this, this loan as well, so that the district can save some money. That's what that is about. That's why, you know, Attorney Dick had talked about $15 million and last board meeting.
We did.
In that box, because from the 13,350, but now we went up to the 19 because we added the additional refinance.
Gotcha, okay. And that's what you were saying about like moving around the principal of the loan?
Right.
Okay, so.
That was a perfect explanation by Pam, but yes.
Okay.
And we're only going to move forward with the refinancing if we can save.
If it's favorable.
Right. So we're going to tee it up, and it's going to be available to us. We're planning to lock in interest rates in early April, around April 9th. So depending what, what rates do between now and then, if we can save, you know, 85 or $100,000 after costs, we'll go forward with it. If we can't save it because rates go higher, then we'll just kind of leave that on the shelf, and it's no harm, no foul that you had it set up to.
Okay, so the 13,350, that's, that is our, that's our new debt.
That would be the new debt.
You can say, once that's voted on, if it's a yes or no. Now, that, the 4,500,000, that's previous debt that we are rolling into this.
Correct. It's not new debt.
Correct, okay. So that will close out any other, that other loan that we have, once we roll it into this.
That's correct.
Okay, so the only new debt that we would have then is that 13,350.
Correct.
But by state law, we have to open it to a 19 million due to variables of rates and everything else.
It is a confusing process, so we have the same conversation with boards across the state. And again, I'm Zach Willard. I work at Public Financial Management, okay? We're the district's independent financial advisor. So our role is to have a fiduciary duty to the district, to make sure that the interest rates are fair market, to make sure that you're not overborrowing money. I'm registered to do specifically this. We've worked for the district for a while, and we work with about 240 schools across the state.
That's what I was going to ask.
And as your solicitor said, this, again, this is a confusing process, but this is the process. And there's, you know, nothing about this that's different than what we would use at other school districts in Pennsylvania.
There's a statement in here from Mrs. Mondock. It reads this. It says, "The payment of all costs and expenses incurred by the school district in connection with the issuance and sale of the bonds." Can you tell me what that is?
But yes, you're correct. So the, the way these work is when you do the borrowing, the issuance costs are paid out of the borrowing, meaning that you don't have to come separately out of the general fund to pay for them. They're estimated at $132,000.
$132,000. Prepare this document.
Well, to do all of the things that happen, to execute the borrowing, to go out and sell the bonds, borrow the money. Yeah, bond insurance, bond rating, there's a lot of things that go into this, but those are the costs associated and folded into the debt.
I have one question, and maybe I misunderstood you. I apologize if I did. You said if you do not get the rate you want, then you will pull the bond. You won't go through with it?
We would pull the refinancing portion of this, so you're not locked into doing the refinancing by approving this tonight. We only want to do the refinancing is if we can take that old higher interest rate from the 22s and replace it with a new lower rate that generates positive savings somewhere between 75 and 100, or even higher. If rates go down a bunch and we can save 135,000, then that would be great. But I think as long as we can save, you know, something like 75 to $100,000 after you net out the costs associated with that, then we consider that a win. This is kind of like the last bite of the apple for the 22 refinancing.
Is that 132,000 added to this amount?
That's all included in, in these.
Included. So as a school board member, I'm supposed to sit here, look at the information I'm given, and vote, right? And yet, you're saying that this information is, does not reflect what is really happening, right?
Well, so again, the information is a box. What, what's really happening is this one page that has the PNC.
I got that about five minutes ago.
Right. That's what we expect to happen based on today's market. The documents that we gave you about two, two or three weeks ago, that's what we expected, you know, at that time. Interest rates will again change between now and April 9th, when we expect to price it. Rates could be higher.
Why did I get Exhibit A and B?
I'm sorry?
Why did I get Exhibit A and B?
Because those are the legal documents that Anthony has to file with the state of Pennsylvania.
But they don't reflect what I'm supposed to vote on?
Well, that's, that's how the state process works, and again, I said, it is confusing.
Yeah. Well, I'm certainly not going to be a part of this.
When, when we file with the state, we send this resolution, but we will also send the final bond purchase agreement that has the actual terms of your bonds and all of the debt service that is locked in for the full maturity. So when it goes to the state, they will only approve exactly what was borrowed.
Do you happen to have the specific state law that we could look up at reference, and if not, you can get it to us?
It's the Local Government Unit Debt Act.
Okay.
Sorry, say that one more time.
Local Government Unit Debt Act.
They're not telling the truth. I'm telling you.
Are we able to ask PM questions? It's still her time, or?
It's her report.
Yeah, it's, it's her time.
Just see if I'm correct here. Our debt service is going to go up 762,000 year 2026, correct?
So, so again, I would go back to the, to the one.
That's what I'm going by that paper. Our debt service is going to go up 762,000 in the year 2026.
It's going to go up $584,000, $584,000 in the.
It says here, total projected debt service now is 2,013,000. It says it's going to go up to 2,775,000.
So the first, the first column where it says new money, and the first number is 584,000, that's the new debt.
Why, why is the debt service total going up so much at the end?
Because then we're showing you in the second column, the refinancing that we're, that we've been talking about. That's debt that you already have, right? But we're going to refinance, so we're going to get rid of the 2022s, and we're going to replace it with the new refinancing that's going to save right now 117,000.
That means this paper is wrong, because why does it say our debt service for 2026 is going to be 2,775,000?
Right. So Alicia just pointed out that if you look at footnote number two, it says that the debt service under local debt service excludes the 2022 being refinanced. So again, the numbers you're reading are correct, but I'm trying to differentiate between the debt service that's new to the district, that's associated with the project, the 13,350 that we're borrowing. That's in that first.
So our debt service is going to go up 640,000 then.
Yeah, after all the dust settles, for the new project, your debt service will have gone up 640,000.
Well, I'm just getting, I'm just trying to get, right now, we don't have Act 93 done, and with our increased payroll, it's probably going to be around six mils in our district. We add this increased debt service, it's another six mils. I'm just looking out for the taxpayers, because we're going to be raising taxes for the next four or five years to accommodate this and our other obligations. That's what, I'm just trying to get straight of what exactly.
That's not necessarily true.
Why isn't it true?
Well, it has to be voted on, and if it doesn't get voted on.
I'm just talking about why isn't my millage, why isn't it correct?
Well, no.
We've got a payroll increase for the next five years of at least 600,000 to 700,000.
The one thing that this doesn't keep, factor into is the amount that we are to realize with the GISA savings.
We what?
The amount that we are to realize as a district as the GISA savings.
But you have $347,000 there, and that number's a zero, because that'll give you anything during the construction year. You, you said it's a deduction of $375,000, and that number's a zero, Pam, for the first year.
Well, actually, one of the first things in talking with Constellation that they're looking to do is to replace the lighting, and I believe that is where they projected a lot of our savings as well. So that is something that we would.
You're going on a price of energy now. If energy goes down, we'll save less.
When has energy ever gone down? You, you keep harping on this.
It could go down.
No, not, never in my life have I seen energy costs go down.
Okay, let's say.
When did it happen? When has it happened?
Let's say it goes down.
You obviously have seen it before.
We are backing into, we're going to need seven, eight, 10 mils.
Okay.
To balance this district's budget.
That's not true.
Oh, okay, well, you, okay, it's not true. You're going to say that right now. Tell the public.
Yeah, tell the public.
Tell, tell the public.
I just did, yeah. What you were saying.
Do I buy this market or not? We need no millage increase.
I didn't hear it.
Yes, what you're saying is not true.
No budget, and we need no millage increase.
That's not what you said, though.
That's not what he said.
That's not what I said. All right. Anything else for these folks?
Yeah, one more question. Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
So according to what's on the sheet, as of 2023, our old debt will be paid in full. Or what we're, we're bringing into it if we, if we choose that.
So the old debt, you're talking about the existing debt service or the one that we're refinancing?
Or the one that we're refinancing.
Yeah, so, so the one that we're refinancing, if we do nothing with that, if we do not refinance it, it would be paid off in 2031.
Okay.
By refinancing, we are not stretching out the debt. We're not doing anything artificial to create the savings. We're just simply lowering the old higher rate to new lower rate. The new piece will still be paid off in 2031 in the same amount of time. It's just going to have a lower rate on it.
So more will go to the principal of it then?
Correct.
Okay.
So Nicole, we keep paying the 2,000,000, 2.3 million now on the old loan. Isn't that what he said? You keep paying the same rate to pay off the old loan?
On the two old ones that we're not refinancing, the, the 2021 loans?
That's 2.2 million.
There's 2.2, two, about $2 million of debt service on a net basis. Those will stay there. We're not touching those. Those have interest rates on them in the 1%. So it doesn't make sense to try to refinance those, because we take a 1% rate and we'd make it 4%. So those are leaving alone.
That goes to 2031.
That goes till 2029. Again, I'm looking at the one page.
2029?
That's correct.
For the ones in 2020 that were borrowed in 2021?
So that's another $10 million, but the, the old debt is 16,500, so I, I get, I can't add that up in my head. Those payments, we owe 16,500,000 from the old, from the loans that were made a long time ago, okay? And they've been refinanced and rebonded and all that stuff over and over and over and over. So if you add up those, those five numbers, you get approximately 9, 10 million. But we owe 16,500,000.
So that's in the third column, which is what the new refinanced debt would look like. The 4,851, do you see that total at the bottom? That's your, that's your 2022 A note that we're refinancing into the new 2025.
Okay, this refunding thing was money we got from the state, is that right?
The refinancing is not new money from the state. The refinancing is taking the old loan and the old higher interest rate and taking and putting a new lower interest rate on it to save money.
This is all banking on you can get a lower interest rate, correct?
Correct.
So if you can't get a lower interest rate, then that goes off, that goes off the sheet.
Then we're going to take that off of the transaction.
So then we would end up with a 2,775,000 debt service in 2026, correct?
Correct. Approximately.
I'm just trying to get it straight. How sure are we going to, we're going to get the lower interest rate?
If we were doing it today, we would get that lower interest rate. We have about three weeks until we're locking in the rates on this transaction.
Exhibit A says the interest rate. Is that a coupon? Is that what a coupon is?
Exhibit A, that's.
It says 6% straight down the line.
Yeah, so that's, so going back to building the box. So if you look at, again, the one pager, we expect to borrow this at something like 4% and change, okay? When you go back to building the box, the 6% rate, again, is not what we would do. We don't expect to get that.
Why didn't we get that then?
Because, again, because the state requires you to build this box, and it has certain assumptions in it, and I know it's confusing. It's just unfortunately what the.
No offense, Sam, but I feel like I'm talking to a used car salesman. I just don't understand this. And I don't know why I got it.
That was rude.
I don't know why I got it.
All right, anything else? Thank you, folks.
Thank all three of you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Pam, business manager, if you want to go ahead and go through your items, and then we'll go solicitor, then superintendent.
Okay. As we talked about earlier, the budget meeting will be on the 24th of this month due to, due to, but, due to time constraints with the PASBO conference. I will say, I did go to the PASBO conference last week. I am very appreciative that I was able to do that. I can tell you that met with a lot of my, my cohorts there, as well as PASBO, as PASBO team members. We talked about what the revenues would look like with the state this year. There is a lot of uncertainty, obviously, with the Federal Department of Education possibly going away without any plans in place as to how the states would handle those funds coming into them. I can tell you, however, one of the bright spots was, and we won't find this out until the beginning of May, is our homestead farmstead relief. It is my understanding that that will increase quite dramatically for all school districts, which will help our taxpayers, which that always makes me happy if there's something that we can give them. But like I said, unfortunately, I, we don't receive that until May the 1st. So right now, I don't know what that is. I'll be working on the revenues. I have started to work on that as far as the budget goes, and I'll have a better idea on the 24th. We should have some additional information within the next month regarding our healthcare costs. And we should have a better idea, but like I said, as time goes on, we'll, we'll gather some more information from the state as well as from the healthcare consortium, and that'll get us to, give us a better idea of where we're truly going to stand. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
I do have a quick question. Has, has ever in the history of Southmoreland, have we ever been in a debt situation of maybe not the 32 million, but somewhere that's like a big heap of debt? Have you ever, have you had the chance to research that?
I haven't researched that. I could look into that for you, for sure. To my knowledge, like I said, whenever I came here, I looked at the outstanding debt that we had. I was able to negotiate extremely favorable rates for us with First National Bank. We refinanced two loans at that point in time. General, well, they were general fund bonds, but they're now loans because they're a lower dollar amount. And one of them is actually even below 1%. So like I said, we were able to save, I believe, in that refinance $360,000 for the district.
I would guess that when that high school project was done, that was a pretty major project.
Sure, yeah.
Or the middle school.
My guess is it's probably the middle school. It would be the highest one. I'd have to look into that information for.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Yep.
And what time is that meeting on the 24th?
What time is the meeting on the 24th?
Five o'clock?
Is it six or five?
Dr. Boone's looking at that.
I'm looking at it right now. Give me one second. It is 6:00 PM Eastern Standard Time.
6:00 PM. High school.
Yep.
All right, you go ahead, Solicitor next.
Yep, Solicitor's information.
I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Superintendent's information.
Thank you, Mr. Frann. I have a couple of things tonight. First and foremost, that was a pretty heavy start to the meeting. I kind of want to lighten it up a little bit. I always like to try to bring in the, the light side of what happens in the district and what's actually good. That's what's going on with what our kids and what our teachers are doing in the district. So first and foremost, I wanted to highlight an event we had, and I know Mr. Beistow had spoke about it the other, during his comment about an event at SPC. Friday, March 7th, we had Read With Me at SPC. And what Read With Me at SPC is, we have a bunch of volunteers that come in and read to our students at SPC and do certain craft and activities with the books that they read. Yes, you do see a picture of me reading Skippy John Jones there in the bottom right-hand corner, which is one of my daughter's favorite books. And it was a little warm in there that night, but, but, you know, that's what we do. However, we had, I, I can't tell you the exact number of students we had. I want to say there are probably just shy of 100 or so students with their family members with them that went through certain stations. I want to say I had four or five groups of students that came through that night. It was a great night. The kids had a good time. Parents had a good time. The parents actually had a good time asking me questions after I was done reading, because they got to realize that I was the person behind the phone calls in the morning whenever I call delays or cancellations. So all in all, it was a good night. I know a couple of you who are here were there that night. And those of you who volunteered that night, thank you very much, and to our SPC staff who organized it. They were rock stars because it was a pretty smooth night. It was one of those nights where I'm proud to say that I'm, I'm here at Southmoreland, so. The next thing, we do have one of our own. Mr. Miles Kuhar came in to SPC, I want to say last week, maybe the week before, and spoke to a, a group of students. You'll see in the pictures that some of them actually have their shirts tucked in, because that was one of the bigger things that they learned in that session, is that our military personnel have to have their shirts tucked in. So whenever they went home that day, they made sure, whenever they spoke to their parents during dinner or afterwards, and their parents asked, "Why is your shirt still tucked in?", that they continued to wear their shirts tucked in that night. But anyways, Miles read a children's book, and if you look at the description there, one of the copies that one of the students were able to take home, a mini stuffed chesty to take home, which was part of the book. So, and this was something near and dear to our heart. I always like it when one of our graduates comes back and gives back to our community, especially one that serves our country. So hats off to, to Mr. Miles there. And the last two things, I got, happy to say that Mr. Clu, our middle school principal, was published in the most recent Pennsylvania Administrator. was published in the most recent Pennsylvania Administrator Magazine. So hats off to Mr. Clu, who's in the audience. It's not every day one of our own gets published, and I think it's important for us to recognize when that happens, especially with all the great things that are happening here at Southmoreland Middle School. In a time whenever there's a lot of stuff going online about some misinformation about how poorly public education is doing, I feel like it's very important to show our pockets of excellence, which is exactly what's happening here at Southmoreland. So, Mr. Clu, kudos to you in getting published in this magazine. And last but not least, I also like to highlight certain pieces of research that happened that highlight the great work that happens here at Southmoreland. One of the things is the Education Recovery Scorecard. Once again, I know there's a lot of information out there saying how poorly Southmoreland does on certain things with no context. However, in this case, I'm happy to report that out of 17 districts in Westmoreland County, we were ranked fourth in math and fifth in reading in terms of how well our teachers and our students are doing recovering from the effects of the pandemic, in terms of the trend line of what is happening in our classrooms here at Southmoreland. So once again, I wouldn't be doing my job if I gave my hats off to the hard work that's happening here in our buildings by our teachers and our students and our parents in the community. So, thank you. And then the last thing I have, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Frun here to talk about the musical before we move on. But I will say that I participated on Friday at CWCTC for countywide CS, Computer Science Scripting Training, with representatives from districts across the county to really take a look at how computer science instruction is happening within our buildings. It's easy for us to sit and talk about, I just gave you a slide on reading and math, and that's the only thing I talked about. But in 2025, we're not doing our jobs here if we are not instructing our students to be proficient in technology, specifically computer science initiatives. So what this initiative is, to make sure that we are aligned K to 12 with computer science standards, specifically the Computer Science Teachers of America standards that PDE didn't adopt, but they recommend as far as how school districts handle the business that they do in terms of computer science. I'm happy to report that we started to do an analysis of those standards to see what we cover, what we don't cover, what we need to do better at. I will tell you that there is a lot we need to do better at in terms of computer science, and we've identified those things. And over the course of the next couple of years, we have a couple changes you may see in terms of our curriculum to highlight what's going on in computer science. And actually, one of the things that came out of it, which I never really thought of, we have neighboring districts already that are looking at their curriculum apps and adding components into their curriculum apps that show how computer science standards are applied in other content areas aside from just computer science classrooms. So when you're talking about a fully aligned system to prepare our students to be successful once they leave Southmoreland, that's a place where we want to get to, and we're not there yet, but we're progressing. So, and that'll be all.
Good. I just want to give a shout out to everybody that had anything to do with the musical. I went Saturday. It was phenomenal. What a production. That's definitely something that we can be proud of. So thanks, everybody that was a part of that. CWCTC report.
I was unfortunately out sick for the last meeting, so I've got nothing to report.
All right. WIU report.
Well, the IU meeting that I was to attend was scheduled for March 24th, and Southmoreland changed meetings to March 24th. So I will have no idea what the IU is doing there. And then in April, we meet on the 15th. The IU meets on the 26th. So as far as I know, the earliest report I can give on the IU may be in May. And that's unfortunate.
Committee reports. We'll start with buildings and grounds. Mrs. O'Rear.
That's a lot to unpack. It was nice to see that we had a public turnout at our last meeting, which was March 10th, so just last week. We don't get very, we don't get any people at our committee meetings whatsoever. So it was kind of nice to actually have some people come in and give their opinions and have, you know, discussion. Sure, discussion got heated, but it's still nice to know, you know, opinions of the public. Talked a lot about different things. Some of the things that's going to go on with our GISA project, especially the field, because that needs to be replaced very soon, and I think that's going to be coming up. I thought I wrote it down. Do you have a date of, for the field, for the turf?
I'm sorry. I had something said to me. Can you say it again?
Field for possibly when the turf would be laid, once it's.
Yeah, absolutely. They are waiting until school's out. So the first week of June, they are going to start that work, and they said it would take 16 to 18 business days in order to get that project done.
Okay. Okay. I did write 16 days. Sorry about that. We spoke about the rock wall and how it was supposed to begin. You know, it would take probably like three weeks to a month to finish, but unfortunately, there was some issues. Once they got down there, it's not all limestone, or it's a mess. I don't know if Calvin wants to speak a little bit on that, if they've come back.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Traders coming up to the podium, basically.
Yeah, so the rock wall was originally thought to be all limestone. It has been remortared before, you know, pointed, and the last time it was done, it was basically slathered with mortar. So as they took the concrete cap off of the rock wall, we started uncovering a lot of shale. Shale was breaking apart as it's uncovered. So the fear at this point is, it's going to continue crumbling. We're looking at a couple of different options to fixing it. One would be a block wall in front. One would be a poured concrete wall. You could also take and remove the busted stone, of which there are many, and try and replace him. That would be cost exorbitant. So that's where we're at with that at this point. So we do have three different options to proceed with.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're getting a couple quotes to present to the board. Is that where we're at?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're waiting on quotes.
So what happens with the company that started work?
They took the cap off, and then that's when they noticed everything. And they're like, okay, this is a little bit more in-depth than what we thought it was going to be.
Yeah, so they're pretty much going to be in a holding pattern until, besides exactly what they want to do. From a safety standpoint, is the wall still safe for folks to be on the field and around the. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And in all of the options presented, the thought is, any new structure, if they would put a new structure in front of that stone that's there, is that they would tie into that wall for more support because that's how structurally sound the wall still is.
Yeah.
All right.
Trying to think. There was massive flooding in our boiler room up at the high school, and I'll let Calvin talk about that, Mr. Trader talk about that as well. But thankfully, we have it under control, but there's some things that we're going to have to do in order to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Right, so twice in the last three years, the boiler room has flooded, and I'm talking eight to 12 inches of water in the boiler room. What's normally happening is, the outside area of the boiler room, there's drains. Those drains do not lead down to the bottom of the parking lot. They lead back inside the boiler room. Then they go underneath the hallway, empty out in the front of the school. Just by chance, we caught those backed up. The water was up 10 inches inside the boiler room in the outside area. Our switch gear is in that boiler room. If water gets to the bottom of the switch gear, we're going to have a real problem. So my thought is to go in and actually cut a sump pump into the boiler room floor to get that water out. That will be a permanent solution. We're also going to have the entire road going down to the front of the school. We're going to have a ditch dug there that'll be at no charge through constellation. They'll take care of that and fill it in with riprap. Also, we want to take and put water sensors in that boiler room so in case it ever does start to come up, because this can happen anytime, you know, day, night, whenever, we'll at least have a heads up that, hey, it's starting to come up. But I think we have an answer for, you know, a long-term fix.
Remind me, is that switchgear on a curb, or is that actually on the floor?
It's actually on the ground.
Yeah. That would have been scary, for sure. And we're looking at a cost to stay somewhere, what, under $10,000, correct, for all of that?
Yeah, the cost that I've gotten so far is going to be in that neighborhood, and we'll have it done, of course, as cheaply as we can. But it just has to be fixed because, you know, my guys have been in that water, and I've been in it, and we don't want to do that.
That's horrible, yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Trying to think. The other thing we were looking at is, well, no, we have the insurance and covering the leak and everything that happened here. Thank gosh. Is that some of this as well? Other than that, I think that's pretty much it. Our next meeting will be June 16th.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance, District Operations, and Transportation. Mrs. Guyer's not here. There are no updates, but the next meeting will be March 24th at 6:00 PM. Personnel Policy and Academics, Dr. Fike.
There are no meetings. I'm not aware of any.
Okay. The next meeting is April 29th. Non-academics, Athletics, and Extracurricular, Mr. Shipley, we didn't have a meeting, and the next meeting will be to be determined. PSBA Liaison, Mr. Yotzi, any updates?
Hey, I made the list. Okay, so the, PSBA did send out the State of Education Report. If anyone would like to view that, it's on psp.org. But just some highlights I'll jump through. For the third year in a row, biggest challenge faced by school leaders continue to be the student mental health needs, budget pressures, and staffing shortage, which I know we've probably felt two of the three here. On the budget pressure side, which we're talking a lot on budgets and spending right now, the top five pressures on that, 73% of schools reported charter school tuition payments, 53% of schools did special education costs, 38% of schools inadequate state funding, 32% healthcare increases, as Pam has talked on before, and 28% is facility maintenance and construction. So I know we got a lot of issues here, but we're not alone as we look across the state. A few other highlights out of that report, mandatory charter school tuition payments, still the top source of budget pressure, and this is the sixth straight year for that. 77% of schools, so more than three quarters of districts, reported having at least one building in need of major repair or replacement. And 81% of schools continue to postpone renovation projects due to lack of state reimbursement. And then the final one I'll throw out is more than 80% of school districts reported experiencing a scarcity of qualified mental health care providers, which is a biggest challenge in connecting students with the care they need, as we've talked a few times here before. So all that's available in more detail, as well as they published a very nice video to kind of give you a brief overview of it on psp.org. Mr. Yotzi, I'll add to that, that at the end of February, the Auditor General released a report on cyber charter funding, well, actually, cyber charter tuition and misuse of funds, which shed a lot of light as to where everyone's taxpayer dollars are going in a system that is not accountable to anything. So I was in a PARZ meeting with other superintendents on it, and I actually organized a meeting with the other superintendents with Senator Stefano's district, which encompasses a couple of our districts here in Westmoreland, all of Fayette, all of Somerset County, and all of Bedford County. I plan on having a meeting with all the superintendents with Senator Stefano to talk about that Auditor General's report, to advocate for cyber charter reform in the state budget because it is, it is an issue in terms of not only where do our funds go, but in terms of improper invoicing of school districts, that we need to, we need to get some relief fund here at the local level. So if we're talking about advocacy at all, if you could advocate for anything with any representatives or senators, advocate for that cyber charter reform, because if we would fix the cyber charter reform here at Southmoreland, your concerns, Mr. Assipiter, of what our budget would be, would go away.
There's an interesting page in here. There are 50 states in the Union. Pennsylvania is the fifth from the highest, the fifth highest state, where the bulk of the money comes from local revenue, not from state revenue. Our revenue comes from our people, our taxpayers. We're the fifth highest in the nation, depending on local revenue.
I would like to say, I'm glad you brought that up. As far as our per-people expenditures go here at Southmoreland, our per-people expenditures are lower. Once again, I like to highlight the good stuff we do here. Our per-people expenditures here are lower than the state average, by far.
Yeah. Speaking of, Pam, if you don't mind, what do we pay in tuition for one student for cyber charter versus one student to go to just a private school?
I'll have to look at that because there are several different rates. Unfortunately, you would think typically there should be one rate, but that's part of what Dr. Boone was talking about in the audit. They have found that there are variable rates at this point in time. And a matter of fact, we are currently working on several write-to-knows, asking for our PDE 363, which gives us that information on what it should be throughout the state. So, yeah, I will get that information for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I will say that the amount we play, we pay for every special education child is exorbitant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't we have kids in like 11 charter schools? 10 or 11? No?
Oh, there's possibly more than that now. And one of the things they talked about at PASBO was the fact that whenever kids are now going, and we've noticed this in our own bills, because we've looked at that, we did an analysis of our cyber charter expenses maybe about a month or so ago. And they had talked at PASBO about the cyber charter, basically assigning the kids to special, as a special needs student, when we didn't have an IEP for them whenever they were here in-house. So therefore, if they do that, then obviously they can charge us more. So that's part, that's part of the problem that we were talking about whenever I was out at Hershey last week.
I thought you averaged that out one time, Pam, and it was like $24,000 or something.
I believe that is correct, but each year it goes.
You said that. I mean, you just said it once, yeah.
Excuse me. Each year it's been steadily going up. And like I said, we looked at that most recently. In fact, we most recently even did an analysis of our special needs kiddos, just to see, you know, what we're paying for that in-house. We looked at their tuition rates. We looked at their rates for their OTPT. We looked at all of that type of information, even as well as their, just to see where we were in comparison to the cyber charter. So I can get that for you. Okay?
Pam, have you talked about what the impact of school choice would be, should it come to pass?
Actually, we did not talk about that at PASBO. That did not come up.
All right. School Safety and Security, Mr. Yotzi. We didn't have a meeting. The next meeting will be April 22nd. Student Reports.
March spirit and scholar winners will be announced at the next board meeting. Senator for a Day, Southmoreland students participated with other school districts in the Senate for the day seminar for future leaders hosted by Senator Pat Stefano. The seminar gives students an opportunity to take on the role of senators to see how the legislative process works. Students are divided into Senate committees to discuss bills, take positions on legislation, draft laws, and meet in full session to present, debate, and vote on the legislation drafted by the various committees. Other than reading about the process, they get to be a part of it, helping shape the policies and laws that affect their own lives. Thank you to all the panelists and Senator Stefano for hosting this event. World Affairs Institute Youth Changemakers. Southmoreland students Elizabeth Boone and Alexis Holder participated in the 54th Annual World Affairs Institute's Youth Changemakers Event at Carnegie Mellon University. Designed to engage young minds in critical thinking about global and local issues, the event featured interactive sessions, workshops, and discussed panels. Students explored topics of global significance, examined Pittsburgh's role in the international economy, and discussed what the city has to offer on a global stage. They also consider how youth can shape the region's future. A special thank you to Scottsdale Rotary for sponsoring this event. Interlac Club Community Support. Over the past month, the Interlac Club has collected nearly 300 pounds of spaghetti noodles to support the Rhodes Cancer Foundation spaghetti benefit and the Williams spaghetti benefit. The initiative brought together students and teachers in a meaningful event to support former Southmoreland alumni facing health challenges. to support former Southmoreland alumni facing health challenges. Gifted Coalition Vocal and Dance Competition winners. Congratulations to Renee Berzford for earning first and Caitlin Raymond for earning second place in the annual Gifted Coalition Vocal and Dance Competition held on Friday, March 14th. Their hard work and talent shined in the prestigious event. Student council is in the process of planning the American Red Cross Blood Drive, which will take place April 15th at the high school. This is open to students age 16 and older and staff within the school district. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, if you'd like to go, you may, thank you.
Thank you. Our next section is school board.
Meeting minutes. The board is asked to approve the following meeting minutes. February 18th, 2025, discussion voting meeting. I need a motion.
So do.
Need a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next section is policies.
Board is asked to approve the following policies that have been posted for over 30 days.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Next section is personnel.
Personnel log. The board is asked to approve the personnel log for March 18th, 2025, as attached. All salaries are included, and all clearances are current and on file with the administration.
So do. Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Can I ask why we put the leave on there for people who are taking FMLA? Like, is that necessary? I just, I don't feel that that's anyone's business.
Well, so it tends to be pretty typical for boards, for it to be board approved so that it can be tracked, and some places will acknowledge it, other places approve it. So it's already gone through administrative approval by the time it gets to the board. What was her question, so I'm sorry?
What did you ask, yeah?
Why are FMLA leaves based on the agenda?
I just think that that's something that can be discussed in, like, executive, but I just don't feel that that's the public knowledge for anybody. I mean, I understand no names are done there, nothing like that, but
Right.
I just don't see where it's anybody's business of anybody who takes FMLA leave.
Typically, any leaves of absence that are, that relate to your employees end up on the board's agenda, so that there's some method to track those leaves and to make sure that the board's aware of them and approves them.
Are you saying that should be kept a secret from us? We should not know that?
No, I didn't say that at all. I said that I don't believe that it should be public knowledge.
But as you noted, there's no, we don't attach names. It's employee numbers, and we don't put the condition on, so it's really just the granting of the leave.
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Musical staff.
Oh, we didn't, I don't think we...
Oh, I'm sorry, voting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Musical staff and compensation. The board will be asked to approve the following additional 2024, 2025 staff for the SHS musical, All Shook Up.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Create teaching positions. The board is asked to approve the creation of new professional teaching positions starting in the 2025, 2026 school year, per the SEA CBA agreement, pending adequacy grant funding. One is family and consumer sciences, two is media and communications.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have, go ahead, Sam.
That grant, is that revolving grant every year, or is it a one-time, once we hire the people?
It's supposed to be happening every year. But it's written in the job description as pending continued adequacy funding grant.
So if the grant goes away, those positions go away?
Correct, and that's what's written in the job description.
Okay, just trying to...
Is that for any particular building?
These are both for the high school.
Both for the high school, okay.
I have some questions, but they're, I think they're related to G. Education, the new courses, and they relate to this. So I guess I'll just wait and talk about it later then, because I don't know which one includes...
Yeah, there's nothing else in this agenda that has anything to do with these two positions.
So would those be, would they be considered electives?
Yeah, they are electives, yeah.
They're electives, okay, okay.
And the course requests for both positions are very high.
Okay.
It's amazing whenever you ask kids what they want, and they actually choose it, how that works.
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next section is education.
Student discipline agreements. The board is asked to approve the following student discipline agreements. Number 2024, 2025, 04.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Quick question, and for the next board meeting would be fine, but can we get a breakdown of possible drug use and that type of related things like this that we've had?
Statistics.
Yeah, statistics over the last year or two, just to understand how much this is actually impacting the school?
Yeah, absolutely. I know that every, I think, June, every June, we do a school safety and security report that we're required to do by law, and we'll do that in executive. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Do we get a copy of those results?
Well, so, I mean, I will say that many of my clients, that report is provided verbally or it's provided in a paper form, but then collected back because there is confidential student information on it.
So we will get it?
Yes, in some form.
Is, this is something I had brought up, I think, maybe my first year, second year on the board, about possibly bringing in different, I guess, organizations to come and speak.
Sure. We're still working with Trooper Allen, I can't remember if state police or not, I think it's out of state police, in order to come in and work with our teachers and our students on a new type of drug program. It's something we've had in the hopper all year long. We haven't been able to get it off the ground yet, but it's still something we're working with the Westmoreland County Department of Human Services to make happen.
Okay, so I truly believe, because with that, and, I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but there's been plenty, you know, recovering addicts and addicts, but the main component of it is mental health. That's the main component. So is there something that we can, moving forward, whether it's soon or later, like, you know, integrate those two together?
That's a great idea. I will tell you that we still have one more year of our Building Stronger Connections grant, which funds our mental health suites here in the district. So after next year, we're going to need to try to find a space in the budget to pay for those services that our students are taking advantage of right now. But tying those two things together is a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's always good for interventions.
When you have those drug programs, is there any way that you can determine whether they work, or can you evaluate them, or do we never know what the deal is?
I am all about measuring
Yeah.
how well we do things. I have a hard time thinking about how you would measure the successfulness of one program versus another. I'd have to think on that one a little bit.
You could ask for students...
If I can add, it's just like recovery. You either want it or you don't. And no matter what program, but I think any program is useful, no matter what. Any program will reach someone. So I, I mean, it's all about what you put into it, too.
I will add, it may not be a bad idea, once we do partner with some new resources, to ask those students who have lived through what we had here for years versus what something new looked like, what is more, what they feel was more effective. I don't think it would be hard to do that kind of survey.
Have we ever thought about having anybody who's in recovery, or who's ever been in recovery, to come and talk about their own personal life?
I can't. That's something that I haven't been in a conversation with. I don't know administratively if they've had or not.
It might be something to think about, you know.
We had a student group in previous districts. Your Mothers Against Drunk Driving, or in our case, it was Students Against Drunk Driving, that would always bring in every, they did it every fall before the prom. I mean, every spring before the prom.
Yes, and I'm so happy that they started that.
So they would bring it in, and then two weeks later, they would do the mock disaster drill.
Yeah.
And it would all be part of it, so. But I know that we don't necessarily have those student groups here, so.
Listen, what's the name of that test that they give the kids? They ask them if their parents drink and all that stuff? You know, it's, some people don't want their kids to take it. What's the name of that survey?
That would be the PAEZ survey, I think, is what you're talking about, but I'm not sure.
What is it?
I would say it's the PAEZ survey.
Do we do that every year?
We do not do that here, no.
We have done it here, though, I mean, I know that.
I know that in the past, prior to me being hired here, it was something that was argued at board sessions about.
Well, I just wondered if that's a source of information.
It was...
I think it's a HIPAA violation.
It's not.
Well, a lot of people felt that.
But it was brought up, and it was very heated at the time to not do so.
Okay.
All right, I know that there was, I can't remember the exact board member that brought it up about, we can't be asking parents or students these questions.
But they ask the kids, do you drink? Do you take drugs?
I'm fairly certain that that, the conversation that happened at the board level whenever I was working at the IU at that time, from this board, was there were one or two of you that said, absolutely not, we should not be asking our students or our parents to do the survey.
Like I said, a lot of parents did not want their kids to take it, because they felt it was very intrusive, you know.
All right, back to the agenda item, student discipline agreements. The board is asked to approve the following student discipline agreements, 2024, 2025, 04. I have a motion and a second, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Student service agreements. The board is asked to approve the following annual student service agreements. The Meadows Psychiatric Center, effective 2025, 26, 26, 27, 27, 28.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Are those stable rates for all three years, or are they subject to increase? Because usually I thought we did this by the year. This is three years.
Yeah, they gave us three years' worth of rates, if I'm not mistaken, in that agreement.
Oh, three years of rates, okay. So we know what we're voting on, yeah?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Private Industry Council pre-K counts. The board is asked to approve the 25, 26 agreement with Private Industry Council pre-K counts.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Are they, is that where they use our classrooms?
Correct, they use one of our classrooms at SES.
At SES?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval, excuse me, approval of new courses, Southmoreland Middle School. The board is asked to approve the following new courses. Descriptions are attached.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I went back and looked at the PVAU scores at the high school, and if I remember them correctly, last time I saw them, we haven't had growth, PVAU's growth at the high school for years, number of years.
I don't think that's entirely accurate.
Again, it's just, I'm just looking at the documents that I had.
Sure.
Probably last year. But, you know, I'm very concerned about education and academics, and I was very surprised when I saw this list of new courses. Confident Voices, Exploring Drama, Page to Screen, Music Technology, On Broadway, Scotty News Network, Scottytown Piano Studio, Singing Sensations. I only saw three academic, Human Anatomy, Exploring Science, and Current Events.
It looks like to me 1 through 22 are all academic.
What did you say?
It looks to me all, 1 through all 22 are all academic.
I will add that these courses are all for the middle school. All for the middle school.
And these are elective?
These have nothing to do with the high school.
On Broadway is academic?
Yeah, why can't that be educational?
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a different concept of what academics consists of.
That's fine, and that's okay.
Yeah, these are, these are all courses at the middle school to be offered during the students elective blocks. This has nothing to do with high school.
And this won't interfere with, you know, the four main subjects, correct?
Absolutely not.
Lovely.
I will say that there is no secret that we are fighting an attendance epidemic, not just here, but everywhere.
Yeah, when you can go to cyber charter and...
There is a reason why we are trying to do things differently, to try to inspire students to want to come to school more, to take stuff that they want to take. And this is another, this is another way where we are trying to reach out to students and the families at their interest level to make them want to come. Specifically, it was brought up in our comprehensive plan that we need to do better with attendance. And if we continue to do the same thing we've always done, we're going to continue to get the same results.
Okay. What are we on, the vote?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Next section is finance.
Monthly Board Treasurer's Report. The board is asked to approve the Treasurer's Report as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? General Fund Board Summary Report. The board is asked to approve the General Fund Board Summary Report as attached.
So do.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fund Accounting, Capital Fund, and Food Service Check Summary Listing. The board is asked to approve the Fund Accounting, Capital Fund, and Food Service Check Summary Listing as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? General Obligation Bonds. The board is asked to adopt a resolution, as presented by Bond Council, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $19 million in accordance with the provisions of the Local Government Unit Debt Act for the purpose of providing funds for capital improvements under a guaranteed energy savings agreement with Constellation Energy Corporation.
So do.
Second.
Discussion.
Like a roll call?
Roll call, please. It's on record.
Roll call vote.
I have some concern. Am I allowed to discuss?
Yeah, it's the discussion portion.
I went through the list of things provided by Constellation, and nothing on that list pertains to education or academics, nothing.
Yeah.
So this is $19 million, and there's no education component.
We generally don't borrow money to pay for education. We have that set aside already in the budget. These items are just too large for our yearly budget, so that's why we're borrowing.
Well, it's not going so well, Dwayne, it's not going so well. And I think if we're going to borrow money, first of all, it should be for educational purposes. But secondly, we are kicking our taxpayers' teeth in. We're already a state that has the highest levels of local taxes, and I guess we just skim this over $32.5 million. Oh, that's chump change. Well, it's not to me. And I have tremendous sympathy for people. Somebody's going to lose their house out there, and it won't be more, it will be more than one. We constantly have people wanting to take the assessment appeals, less money, less money. There is, these are 100% local effort. Not one dime is given to help any of this money that you're voting on tonight. And like I said, we're $16,500,000 in debt from bills, I'm sorry, from loans that were made years ago that are still not paid.
It's not a broken-down building.
It's computer, it's just, it's a snowball. And if, in a few years, if you need something, you're just going to borrow it again, and it'll just keep getting bigger and bigger. When we went to that meeting, Sam and I came, we had a list of those things that were on that Constellation thing. And we had a plan where you could look at it over a long-range period of time, pay as you go, do them in order of what was absolutely necessary now, and down to where it's just aesthetic stuff. That wasn't even discussed, it was not even discussed.
Yeah, you, I, like I said in that meeting, I'll say it in this meeting, you're about 20 years too late with that plan. So 20 years ago, great idea. Now, it's, it's too late.
20 years ago, they borrowed $38 million.
Too long.
We're paying on a loan from 20 years ago, Dwayne.
We kicked the can down the road too long and now this board has to pay the piper.
Dwayne, we're still paying when they, they borrowed this money years ago. I think some of this debt goes back to 2009 when they opened these schools, okay? We're not even paying these, these debts off and we're borrowing more and more and more and more. And there's only so many places you can get money. The, the contribution rate from the state is 0.00, 0.000. It's all across the page. We are saddling people with this $32.5 million debt in, in a, in a relatively poor community. We are not considered a wealthy community.
What do we got? Motion and a second?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Isabella?
No.
Mr. Yutsi?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No, no. And I do want it recorded in there that the reason I am voting no is primarily because I was given false information. And as a board member, I had the right to more accurate information. I found out about the $19 million whenever the agenda, I picked up my agenda. It was supposed to be 13.5.
Mr. Frund?
Whoa, 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 whoa. That, that's, that's false. What you said is false. What you said is false. It is 13.5. Actually, no, it's not 13.5. It's 13,350.
Can we amend this item then to say 13.5, Nicole?
You said 13.5.
This is 19 million. This is 19 million.
You said 13.5.
We're, we're in the middle of the, we are in the middle of the vote.
Well, why lie to people? Why, why continue to allow a lie?
I understand. I, I understand what you're saying.
We just feed the narcissism.
Yes.
It's horrible.
All right.
Mr. Frund?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Grabiak?
Absolutely.
Mrs. O'Rear?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
No.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And? Five to eight? Or sorry, five to three?
Thank you.
Next section is Building Grounds and Security.
Wireless District-Wide Radios. The board is asked to approve the purchase of district-wide radios from Westcom Wireless, budgeted and paid for by the 2024, 2025 PCCD grant. So moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
What's PCCD?
PCCD is the statewide grant for health and physical safety that happens every year. Pennsylvania crime.
The Pennsylvania Commission on Crimes and Delinquency.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
But yes, the, these are for radios that could work across our campus. So if we have something that's happening at the high school, our security staff, administrative staff, counseling staff has, can hear it over here on this campus and vice versa, as well as we have areas of our buildings that even if we're in the same building, our current radios, you can't hear on opposite sides of the building.
You know, years ago, we had a, a board president who brought up the issue of, we had like 35 cell phones out there. I would think that these radios would be more efficient to communicate from building to building.
Especially in an emergency.
Yeah, in an emergency, these are, they will tell you that these are 10 times better than.
More so than cell phones.
Of course, yes.
So I think this is a good thing.
So a quick question. I know that we were given or gifted, I guess you could say, radios from East Huntington Fire Department? I don't know if it was East Huntington or Scottsdale.
I can't remember which one, but yes.
Yeah. So is, is there, what's, what happened to those?
We still have them. They just don't function how we need them to function.
How we need them to, okay. So this, this includes like the whole system, basically?
Everything. Repeaters, everything, yeah.
Mr. Kiefer, you want to?
Okay.
Come on up and explain it to us, please?
Actually, the radios that were donated by the Scottsdale Fire Department and also Norveld at one time.
Okay.
They're actually antiquated. These new radios, six of them will also connect directly to Westmoreland County 911. However, those radios are only to be used by school police officers.
Gotcha. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
All right, I got the second. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Next section is Athletics Activities.
No items for this month.
Final section is Closing Exercises.
I apologize. When it says about athletics and activities, I think maybe something we should add in or if we can at least discuss it would be the field. We discussed it in our Buildings and Grounds at our last meeting and we had already established that we have the money for that.
Yes.
That's already been.
That's not new money, no.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
What did you say? Couldn't hear. What did you say the money was for what?
For the field.
Yeah, but $395,000 is borrowed.
What?
$395,000 of that we're still paying interest on.
Actually, that, that, the amount of that, that money left over is still part of the, the bond. We're actually talking about refinancing tonight, or we talked about refinancing for that 4.5.
So we're still paying interest, still paying interest.
Okay.
Okay.
Last section is Closing Exercises. I apologize.
Yep, Citizens Comments. Can you get the microphone? Yeah, thank you.
Well, so just to be clear, it's comment, so it's not, I can't guarantee you're going to get an answer. You can ask a question, but you may not get an answer tonight. I mean, if people need to do research or look at things, but you will get an answer at some point.
How much is the millage increase going to be? You're undergoing talking, all this money. Do you have any idea what it might be? You're going to raise the mills and taxes? Because the biggest part of this school district are farmers and older people. And it's very understanding how, why people are interested in the millage rate. It might go up. I know it's got to go up. But what is it since you're there talking about borrowing this money and everything else? Do you have an idea?
According to Mr. Frund, it doesn't have to go up.
Say what?
According to Mr. Frund, it doesn't have to go up.
That's not what I said, but thank you for misquoting me. It seems to be along the lines of the only information you have.
Oh, hi, can you go with the?
The board has to pass a preliminary budget in all likelihood at its April meeting and so the board is still working on its budget.
I will have a, I will have a better idea on the 24th, Mr. Beistol. I can tell you that we did vote in January not to go above the index.
Okay.
What's the ma, do you remember what the max of that index is, just?
I wish, I wish to God I did because I know you and I both looked at it.
I feel like it was.
5.7.
Max was 5 or something.
5.6, 5.7 was the max.
Is that under Act 1? Under Act 1?
Yes.
5.7 mills.
What is the index, you know?
5.7.
5.7. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
So I'm just going to touch upon a couple of things that happened throughout the meeting. I came up at the beginning and just asked if please make sure you make an educated vote. I saw a bunch of you write down when they said about the Local Government Unit Debt Act. So if that's something you want to research, don't you think you should have done it before you cast your vote? Because I know that not all of your questions were answered. So now you're locked in, but you still have questions. That's all I asked for that. As for, Dr. Boone brought up that the turf was going to start at the beginning of June. It was going to be 16 to 18 days. The Buildings and Grounds Meeting discussed that everything was necessary between the lighting, the scoreboard. Is that going to be complete before the turf is done? Because you said that needed done so you don't disrupt the turf. So we have a timeline for all of that stuff before June.
We do.
Okay. The solicitor said if we ask questions, they might not be answered because they need researched. Well, clearly, we don't research everything we vote on, so I don't know why you can't answer questions. And then about the attendance thing, this is old news, but I need to bring it up because it did affect a lot of local, or a lot of our students. The board chose to change the schedule where we are now coming midweek of our Westmoreland Fair. Stephanie Guyer made a post on Facebook that Dr. Boone polled 4H families and that's why that decision was made, because most of our students go to Fayette. I want to tell you that I had four of, four students in 4H at Westmoreland County. I was never called, never polled. The correct way to have addressed that would have been to call the extension office because when we sign up, they ask us what school district we are in. So I would have called Westmoreland or I would have called Fayette and they could have gave you historical data, data from last year because this year is still open enrollment.
Correct, I did.
You did?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's false information that one of your board directors put on Facebook, so just to let you know. But she also said that you had talked to a couple 4H families and I know quite a few that weren't addressed. So for your attendance issue, it's probably going to be down the first week because a lot of students, they put blood, sweat, tears, a lot of money. It, it is a costly project, so I would expect that there's going to be quite a few missing that first week.
Those absences will be excused, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, they're absolutely excused through the state because it's a 4H thing. However, you're still not going to have the seats and, or the attendance because they probably will miss. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And I've got a general question and it's fine if we discuss it next meeting, but the gentleman brought up a good point about the air conditioning at the primary center. Have we evaluated that previously?
Sorry. In terms of cost for air conditioning, that bill, not in my time here, it's something we can certainly look at.
Okay.
I mean, it's, the, the board at some point will need to make a decision on this PC.
Yeah.